Do we have a roll call first, please?
Commissioner Schmittl.
Here.
Commissioner Manuel. Commissioner Doscher.
Here.
Commissioner Marler.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Noor. Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we go to the Pledge of Allegiance, let me cover a couple of things here for procedures for public comment from the audience, okay? There's two different mechanisms to allow for comment from members of the audience. First one that we're going to hit up as soon as we come back from our Pledge of Allegiance will be for those people who would like to share information with members of the Planning Commission on items that are not on the agenda tonight. It's just things that you believe to be important, that you should think that we should know about. We can't engage in a discussion with you about it, but it's things that you want us to be aware of, but it cannot be on the agenda for tonight. That's a separate thing. Then the second time you'll be allowed to speak this evening are in public hearings. Now, when we open up a public hearing, we'll allow anybody who wants to speak ample opportunity to speak for and against. I'll ask those people for and those people who are against. Again, there won't be a dialogue with us. It'll be you stating your own opinion about the project that's before us in the middle of the public hearing. And I'll talk some more about that when we actually get in the public hearing because we've had some correspondence that has come in that I want to put on the record to make sure that, on the public record, it indicates that we've had a couple of letters come in, just so that the public that may watch this on video later knows that that, in fact, is taking place. Commissioner Campbell, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Ready, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to members of the Planning Commission as a whole in regard to items that are not on the agenda for this evening? Ma'am, I think I've already had yours for the agenda item already. I've got it up here. I think you handed something to our clerk. Don't worry, we're going to take care of you. Okay. We can hear you now, Verizon, okay. Item number one on the agenda is approval of minutes of the Planning Commission's regular meeting of March the 19th, 2025. Any additions, deletions, or modifications starting to my left with Commissioner Campbell?
None. Same answer.
I have none. Mr. Vice Chair?
None.
And?
None.
None, right?
Yep.
Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the March 19th meeting. Motion by Commissioner Schmittl, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stewart. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is the consent calendar. Items under consent are routinely thought to be routine in nature and do not require it to be taken off the regular agenda and handled separately unless there's a member of the commission that wishes to remove it. Starting with Mr. Schmittl, do you want us to remove the consent item?
No.
Mr. Vice Chair?
No.
I don't. Mr. Stewart?
No.
And Mr. Campbell?
No, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve Consent Calendar, item number two on tonight's agenda, consistent with staff's recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Campbell. And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Schmittl.
Aye.
Commissioner Marler.
Aye.
Commissioner Doscher.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Item number three is a public hearing. It's the only public hearing this evening. Public hearing to consider Project U 24-0036, Lucic. A general plan amendment from Ag 80, agricultural 80-acre minimum to industrial, commercial, and rezone from agricultural district to commercial industrial district for the southern five plus or minus acres of the 36, I'm sorry, 37.67 plus or minus acre parcel and a use permit to reduce the agricultural buffer setback 5411 State Highway 20, Yuba City, California 95993. North of State Highway 20, approximately 340 feet west of Lidle Road, assessors parcel number 13-280-021. Applicant owner at B.C. Enterprises LP care of Bill Lucic. Mitigated negative declaration as proposed MT 6893. Also, for the benefit of the formal record, the Planning Commission has been made aware of three letters that have come in over the course of the last two days when we received them for such things such as a blocked portion of a drainage canal and also a concern for an agricultural buffer and a lack of attention to, I'm synopsizing here, lack of attention to consideration for agricultural areas within the piece of property that we're talking about in Lidle. So we have those three. Those three are in the public record if you have submitted and it's one of those that is a part of the public record for this evening. County staff?
Thank you. Ravina Soria, Associate Planner. So the project is a request for a general plan amendment and rezone for five plus or minus acres of a 37.67 acre parcel and a use permit for a reduction of the agricultural buffer setback. The subject parcel is located on the north side of State Highway 20, approximately halfway between the rural community of Sutter and the city of Yuba City. The site is currently zoned agriculture and is designated as Ag 80 by the general plan. The properties surrounding the parcel are zoned Ag on all four sides. There are orchards to the north, south, and west, and single-family residences to the east. The applicant is proposing to amend the southern five acres of their property to industrial, commercial, general plan designation and the zoning to commercial industrial. The existing parcel is currently developed with a residence on the northern end of the parcel, almond trees, and two 7,000-square-foot buildings at the south end of the parcel, used for a wholesale nursery and green waste facility. The applicant has indicated that they intend to keep all existing uses on-site and only rezone and amend the general plan designation for the five acres to the south. There has been no other formal development proposal or change of use submitted for review at this time. With the proposed zoning designation, future development will be required to comply with the county's design checklist and may require the property owner to apply for and obtain other permits from the Development Services Department. The five-acre portion of the site proposed to be re-designated to commercial industrial has previously been developed with two metal buildings, related parking, site improvements, and is unlikely to be converted back to an agricultural. Application also includes a request for a use permit to reduce the agricultural buffer setback. The zoning code requires that a 300-foot Ag buffer is maintained from any new or expanded non-agricultural use to adjacent orchards. A buffer is not required from single-family residences, so there's no Ag buffer setback requirement on the east side. The orchards located on-site were determined to provide adequate buffering to the parcel north of the subject site, and the orchard, the Caltrans right-of-way, was also determined to provide adequate buffering from the orchards to the south. The existing buildings on-site are approximately 300 feet from that parcel as well. The applicant is requesting a full waiver of the Ag buffer from the orchards to the west with this proposal. The initial study was prepared for this project, which includes seven mitigation measures, and a trip generation analysis was submitted in response to a significant impact with this current proposal. We have three, we have received three comments from the public as a response to the public hearing notices, which were provided to the commission separately. And I just wanted to make a correction on the staff report for Use Permit Finding Number Two. Because the zoning is changing, wanted to clarify that the agricultural should probably be changed to applicable zoning district, so I just want to make that correction there. And then staff is recommending, the Planning Commission recommends to the Board of Supervisors to approve this project with the findings listed in the staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Campbell, any questions for staff?
No questions.
Mr. Stewart?
No questions.
I have none, Mr. Vice Chair?
No questions.
And Commissioner Schmittl?
I have none.
Public hearing on this matter on tonight's agenda. Is there a spokesperson for the applicant? Would that be Mr. Masalim or Mr. Lucic? Yes, sir. Right over here, if you could, sir? Try to make it as convenient as possible. Right up there on the microphone, yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Very good. Planning Commission, thank you for tonight's time. I know it's very valuable. I'm just here in support and to answer any questions you might have. I feel that the property is ideally suited for commercial industrial. The access, it's on the highway and currently been in business for many years, over 20 years now. So we think that this rezoning would be beneficial not only to the county government, creating future taxes, taxes, but also for the community. We need more business properties and additionally out of the Ag handle. So I support it. I'm here now to support that, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Lucic. We'll get back with you if we have any others. Mr. Masalim, do you have anything? I know that you're aware of the letters that came in. Anything you'd like to speak to this or to the letters? It makes no difference, whatever you'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to emphasize a couple of things. The drainage ditch that is part of this, one of the letters that were sent, is a private ditch, it's not a county ditch. So any complaints to the county would, really, the county doesn't have any jurisdiction on it. But I was talking to Mr. Lucic, he will take care of that obstruction. He's going to help you. The other thing I just want to emphasize and just follow up on what Ravina said, this rezoning does not affect the whole property. So the majority of the property, which is behind most of the property owners that, you know, are concerned about this, has, has going to remain Ag. Okay? So there's no, no impacts as far as changing the zoning behind those properties. As far as traffic impacts, that has been analyzed and the impacts are not issue any, any requirements for any content. We are in agreement with the conditions you may have.
Thank you. After we do them, the commissioners themselves will come back to you while the public hearing is still open.
Absolutely, thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the project? Not mean that the rest of you cannot speak if you wish to. First person that I got was Winifred Taylor. I believe that you'd like to speak in opposition tonight, is that correct?
Yes, I'm Winifred Taylor, and I own two parcels on Lidle Road, which are both affected from the heavy traffic that we have. He already has one business on that parcel right there that we're all impacted on continually from the landscape vehicles. Lidle Road goes like this, they come off like this, or they go on like this. So any more traffic on that little corner, and we have harm trucking on the other side. Any more traffic on that, coming onto that freeway is going to impact us all. For the accidents, the traffic, the, we've already had an accident there, and you're putting in lights now at Hembry. Am I correct? You're putting in a traffic light down there to slow the traffic down? So I want to maintain all the agricultural land we can in Sutter County, so I'm totally opposed putting this as a, changing the zoning on this because it has already affected us. We get, he built a road to go along his property that affects us. Everyone on the winter, our water backs up one and a half to two feet on our property because of his construction. They used to have a gun range there that was, we were affected by. Recently, they sprayed some chemicals. People's eyes watered and their nose ran, and it stank really bad. The almonds, which, I'm in favor of the almonds, there's no visibility from, from where he sweeps them clean across the street and even on Butte House when he's down at that end. He doesn't prewater or anything, so we're totally affected by that. So we don't want to change our zoning in that area. We want to keep it Ag residential, and we appreciate it if you guys would. I know he's already built the buildings and presume that he's going to see this as opposition. And you've received other letters, so we ask you not to give him the zoning that he's asking for.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Mr. Analis. Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Juan Analis. I also live in Lidle Road. Pretty much I didn't, had no idea until I got the letter also of what was going on. Now, same with her, I would be affected with the heavy traffic going through the road, especially because I have little kids. I mean, they're not running on the street either, but, I mean, we already got traffic enough as it is. Also, the kind of business that he was going to do, I don't know how it's going to affect us with the green waste, like she was selling chemicals or anything around there with, you know, houses nearby. So that's the reason I was opposed as well.
Thank you, sir. Other individuals in the audience would like to speak against this project? And what I would ask you is a courtesy, if you agree with these two folks, if you have nothing additional to add than what they've said, if you could just say that you concur with them and it was new to add, I would encourage you to add that and share your views in regards to that. But if it's just extra analis, if you could just say I agree with them and their opposition to the project, that would be helpful. So any other individuals in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this project? Yes, sir? On the record.
Thank you. Yep, given Lidle Road.
Sir, excuse me, can I get your name, please, and your contact information?
Juan Reynoso. 1141 Lidle.
Thank you.
I recently moved there like about four years ago, and I moved from the Bay Area because a lot of traffic out there. I finally find this place here in Lidle Road, that I live there with my family, and I really enjoyed the road, I mean, the neighborhood and everything, but I agree with them. If this is going to create a lot of traffic going through there, I mean, I don't think it's a good idea, you know, for the community in there. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir, your name and address?
My name is Michael Margia, Calusa Highway. So I feel like I would be affected the most out of everybody because I'm right on the corner. So I already get a lot of, a lot of traffic within, you know, his business and all, which is not too bad, but, you know, sometimes it is kind of busy. I do have a three-year-old child that likes to be outside, and sometimes, you know, child, children like to get curious, and even though I have my fence closed and everything, but you never know. I'm already affected somewhat, not too much, but affected with the trucking company across this highway, where they're coming in at three, four in the morning. You can hear their, their big trucks, you know. Sometimes you can even feel the vibration all the way across the highway, believe it or not, but I agree with, as all my other neighbors have said, you know. I've been there about two years now, and it's a beautiful community, nice and quiet, you know, but we would like to keep it that way if it's possible.
Thank you very much, Michael. Anybody else in opposition that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is John Pack, and I live on Lidle Road, 1400. He's saying that his property is on the, right off the highway. It's not, there's a frontage road that they have to get onto to get to his property. It's not like he's just coming right off the highway. He's crossing, coming off the highway, and if he put a stop sign or not a sign, but like a light there or something maybe to make it safer, I don't know, but right now it's really unsafe. People come in, people coming off the highway, or people going to the highway, coming, people going to the highway when they're coming off the highway, there's no, they don't slow down. They just take and merge onto the frontage road and don't even pay attention to the people on Lidle Road. They just kind of cut them off, you know, so it's really unsafe. It's our homes, like, like I was under the impression that if our home burnt down and they rezoned it, we couldn't build a, rebuild our home maybe because of the new zoning. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else, I'm going to hold the public hearing open, go back to county staff, ask if there's anything else that they would like to add?
Nothing.
Yes, no?
No.
Mr. Masalim or Mr. Lucic, any comments that you would like to make?
That was interesting. The, over 20 years, I couldn't see the traffic changing much more than it already is. None of our traffic goes down Lidle Road. We want to get right onto Highway 20 and go one way or the other. We really have no reason to go down Lidle, and we never do, and I wouldn't think that any additional traffic would either. It is a public road, and if one or two do go down, I would imagine that would be fine. But there's never been massive traffic going down Lidle Road ever. We do, there is a small frontage from Lidle Road over to the property, and there is the one piece of property there that it has effect. You've only been there for two years, and we've been there for 20-something years. I think it was pretty evident when you moved in that that was a place of business, and we maintain the road going in, we're the only one who maintains it. We keep it a pretty tight ship out there, and I imagine as an industrial, commercial, it would continue to be a, a clean, great place. We are improving it, and it is a big improvement for the Lidle Road area. It always has been.
Masalim, anything? Okay. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, you're welcome to.
My name is, my name is Bob Ingram. My wife and I have lived out there for 1114 Lidle Road for about 33 years. I'm probably affected, all these guys are my buddies, I'm probably affected by the water more than anybody on that road out there. I got two parcels on that road. He built a road, he took out the ditch. I talked, I'd called that David Tombs, I don't know if he still works for the, the county or whatever and stuff, but they, I complained about that, and he said that the county didn't seem to be very interested in doing anything about it. Ditch is gone, he filled the ditch in. The drainage is horrible. I had to pump about 50,000 gallons of water out of my backyard this year. And what we did, we went ahead and pumped it out onto Lidle on the ditch, and we did a good job, it didn't overflow the water, the ditch or anything. This guy's not a very good neighbor. I can just truly, truthfully tell him right to his face, he's not a good neighbor. He's not, he knows that that water troubles. He's never done, done anything. And I, I just, to sit here and talk about he's a, he's improved stuff, that's a joke. There's a road out there, the water, I get all the road, all the water comes off of that road. I have no drainage at all on my properties, none. Ditch is gone. And I'm kind of a, and I'll be honest, I'm upset. I don't give a, you know, what the guy does on his, but he's not a good neighbor. To sit here and talk about he's a, you know, been an improvement, that's a joke.
Thanks, Bob. Public hearing is still open, starting with Commissioner Campbell. Any questions that you might have, discussion items, or questions of members in the audience?
I've got a question for staff, or maybe this is better directed to Mr. Hay. Who, who's responsible for that, that drainage ditch?
So I believe, if you're talking about the ditch that's, there's a ditch that we received a comment about that's on the west of the applicant's property, and I believe that's part of the Snake River, which is a natural water course, and so...
That's a difference. The Snake is on the other side, that's even further to the west.
Okay.
This, this ditch that used to be there was right behind all of our properties. It was just, it was just west of our properties there. The ditch is gone, there is no ditch there anymore. Now, we have a ditch, we have a couple, we have the ditches out in the front on Lidle Road, and, and they drain pretty poorly. I'd have to just up with that, pretty poorly. So like I said before, we took it upon ourselves, I've got the four acres, the two acres aren't bad, the south two is bad behind my place and stuff, and thank God my house is up high. But I've had water out there, I'm a duck hunter, I could hunt ducks, I could hunt ducks out there. I mean, it's just, it's deep. And we went ahead and like finally fired up a pump, this clown's not going to ever do anything about it, so I fired up a pump.
Let's be respectful while you're in here, please, Bob. Let's be respectful.
I don't have any respect for this.
I know how you feel, but there's a lot of other people in the room, so I would ask you to have that courtesy. Thank you. Mr. Hay?
So I think to answer the question, so it, it sounds like they're talking about what may have been a pre-existing ditch that's on the east side of the subject property and the west side of the residences that are on the west side of Lidle Road, and I will say the county is, you know, not aware of work that was done on-site. So, I mean, from the aerial that staff has provided, it seems like there was an extended driveway that was placed. Typically, the county has conditions, if you do any onsite grading, you still have to not affect the existing drainage course. So I certainly can follow up with my staff. David Tom does still work for my department and find out more about that. It sounds like the drainage along the southern ends of the properties are working accurately, but the drainage, if, if there was an existing drainage course on the east side, it would have been all private property, private drainage. There's no county drainage district, and so it's not a county-maintained ditch or drainage conveyance. Right. So...
Through the chair, through the chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask the audience to refrain from making comments until you're, you're invited to return to the podium, and the reason for that is, these are recorded, and we need to have your voices on the microphone. So if you need to speak in response to something that's being set up here, please wait until you're asked to approach the podium. Is that, is that acceptable? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Neil, I appreciate your answer. Those are the questions I have, thank you.
Commissioner Stewart? In just a second, ma'am. Okay, we need to go through the commissioners first? Yeah, thank you.
This whole drainage issue and the frontage road, do we have a better diagram of what everything has been showing on?
I think the one on the screen right now might be the best one we have here. I think they're talking about this area right here, which I don't have a closer view of.
I suppose my question is, and I don't know if it's to staff, is that this business has been existing for a long time. What changes if we make a change in the zoning? Business is still there, does the zoning matter? You know, I'm not sure about that. That's what I'm, I don't know, is that to staff? Is that to Neil? I don't know.
So the, the zoning would allow for additional commercial or industrial uses. At this time, we don't have any proposal, so if there is a new proposal that would require re-review from our planning department, drainage could be addressed through that if there are impacts with that proposal. Regarding the existing business, that's not really addressed with just this current application, the rezone, general plan amendment, and the use permit for the Ag buffer.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair? I have no questions at this time. Commissioner Schmittl?
So if we, if they get rezoned, you're telling us that they have no plan of what they're actually going to do on that five acres, and they'd have to come back and have us approve if it's going to be truck parking or in addition to their business? All the new commercial properties in Sutter County seem to be putting in, I'll say it wrong, but settling ponds or whatever for drainage. I mean, is that something that has to be for sure taken care of later? I want to make sure that we don't overlook this portion of it. Is this something that's going to be discussed later once they determine what they're going to do with the property?
So it depends on what they're going to do with the property. The new zoning would allow some uses as just a permitted use, which means that there's no additional use permit or administrative permit required through planning, but there are some uses within the commercial industrial zone that do require a use permit. So it really depends how intensive of a use they are proposing. So the zoning change may not require another project.
And if it was approved by... And if it was approved by us, then if the neighbors decided they weren't happy with our decision, they could file an appeal, and then it would go to City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Schmittl, I cut you off there midstream while you were going to get Commissioner Campbell's question in. Do you have another question, sir? Not at this time. Okay. Mr. Vice Chair, anything? Okay. Ms. Taylor, you had another item that you'd like to speak to, yes, please, ma'am.
Yes, Ms. Taylor. First of all, this gentleman is not telling you the truth. His landscape trucks go up and down our road, they cross across there because they have no way to really stop. They're kind of forced to keep going once they come off the highway. So any more traffic that he puts in there is going to create more accidents, potential accidents, and more impact on the community. I don't even go out that way anymore because of the traffic. I go out the back way. And what I want to clarify, is he only asking for that little frontage road where he has those two buildings already constructed, or is he asking to develop his whole orchard into industrial?
It's just the front buildings, is it not, in that area?
Yes, so just the five acres on the south, not all of the orchards. That's not part of this rezone.
Okay, so he's just where he's already put the two buildings?
Correct.
Okay. I still oppose it. I don't think any, I don't think it should be another business in there. It's just too much, too much traffic, more traffic going to be on that road, crossing from the highway to that frontage road. It's just too much.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. And there was somebody else that wanted to speak also, was there not? Seeing none? Bob, any other comments that you wanted to make? Okay. Commission's going to close the public hearing, hear no more testimony from the public. For the sake of the rules of the commission, we'll go back one more time for discussion and then take a vote after that, depending upon how the discussion goes. Mr. Campbell?
No further comments, sir.
Commissioner Stewart?
No comments.
I have none, Mr. Vice Chair?
I have none.
And Mr. Schmittl?
I have none.
Okay, chair is open to a motion either way, either consistent with staff's recommendation or a negative motion, but the chair is open at this time. Hearing none, the chair will make a motion to allow the requested operation as consistent with staff's recommendation on this particular item number three. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Have a motion by the chair, a second by the vice chair. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Schmittl?
Aye.
Commissioner Doscher?
Aye.
Commissioner Marler?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Staff's recommendation passes, and if I'm correct, then this will go to the County Board of Supervisors at this point.
Yes, Chair.
So this does not cut off your avenues for concern relative to this project. There is another opportunity for you to address the County Board of Supervisors. They are the legislative body within the county that enacts laws relative to county. Ours is just a recommendation, only at this point that we are consistent with and approving, but I don't want you to think that your opportunity to make comments is null and void after tonight, because it's not. This is a long process, and I appreciate your opportunity to come in and let your voices be heard. This is by far not the end of the process. Okay? Thank you very much. Miscellaneous business from commission and staff. Mr. Hay, any comments from you, sir?
Yes, thank you, Chair and Commissioner, for being present this evening. We, at the staff level, are looking at the various applications that we have to bring before your commission, and we are thinking that the next meeting that we'll have, agendized items, will probably be the June meeting. So at this point, we can't cancel the May meeting, but there will be future correspondence from our department, just so that hopefully everyone can plan accordingly, but we'll also plan to probably have a more robust agenda for your commission, and we thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Neil, could I make a request that we get a hard copy of just the agenda and the minutes from the last session? I love the fact that we can access them online, but sometimes as time runs short, it's nice to have that agenda in front of us as we go through. That would be great.
Most definitely, we can do that. I have staff present, and we will...
Thank you, staff. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart? Any closing remarks or complaints about me holding the public hearing open longer than needed?
No complaints about that. Not much going on. The Liboak has a new interim city manager. The other one left, so now we're number two, and this is now the third one. We're hoping to get somebody there that's permanent. Anyhow, and too bad Bert, his jack-in-the-box is open, so he can go there. Other than that, I have no other comments.
My usual thank you to county staff, Mr. Hay, County Council, IT staff, our planning staff, and support, and members of the commission that come in here and review all this material and do the best that they can in order to make sure everybody gets a fair shake in regards to what's before us. Mr. Vice Chair? And Mr. Schmittl?
I have nothing to add.
Chair will make a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we're adjourned. Now I know why you don't hold those open.